Good evening and welcome to those that are here and those that are viewing on TV. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. I call this meeting to order. Let's have a roll call. Please rise for the invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for the opportunity of living in this great county of Pitt. We thank you for the way you have blessed us. We thank you for the residents of our community and those that are gathered here this evening. We pray that you might be with each one of us as we serve together on this board. Help us this evening to make the decisions that would please our citizens and that would glorify you. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
You join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chairman, do you have a motion on the agenda?
Yes, I would like to move our closed session from the end of the meeting to prior to the public address to the board, and that way we can get our presentations in before that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Mr. Hammond, need a vote on the agenda?
I voted.
It didn't catch.
Try again.
Thank you. Need a motion on the recognition for the Eagle Scout?
I'll say no.
Okay.
Good.
troops of the Boy Scouts of America here in Pitt County, and they have earned the rank of Eagle, becoming Eagle Scouts. And as we normally do in a regularly regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is to award them a certificate for their accomplishment. So if we can ask Adam Garrus to come forward first with any family members he has here? If you need a picture taken, we've got a photographer who can do that at the same time if you'd like. Otherwise, we have a camera. We're taking pictures. So, Mr. Chairman, you go ahead and read. Okay. So what we have here is a certificate of appreciation is awarded to Adam Rochelle Garrus for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he landscaped and built a walkway to the gazebo at the University Church of God here in Greenville. And this is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on the fifteenth day of June 2015, signed by our chairman, Mr. Glenn Webb, chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Webb?
Do you want to get a picture? Make a speech?
Just getting together.
Okay, next, we have David Campbell Sigman, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Is he here tonight? Okay, moving on to our third one. We have Gavin J. Williams Siegel. Is he here tonight? Okay, that's not. All right. We next have an item that's being added to the agenda. We can ask Dr. Travis Burke to come forward. And a special presentation that Dr. Burke, who is the interim director for the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, has asked the privilege to be on the agenda tonight to make this presentation. And, Mr. Chairman, if you would allow, maybe turn it over to him.
Right ahead, Doctor.
Put it in your hands.
Okay, first of all, we appreciate you all having us here on the agenda tonight. And we're glad to have the Smith family here. And he's probably wondering what's going on. He knows nothing about this. Anyway, we wanted to do this prior to his retirement, but he retired so abruptly. So I don't know what happened, but anyway, he did. But Mitch Smith has been a long-serving citizen here of Pitt County and to the citizens of North Carolina. And Mitch started here, this is basically the only job he's ever had, with the Cooperative Extension Service. And which started back in 1983. So he served the citizens of Pitt County for almost 32 years. And during that time, when he became county extension director in 1988, he was probably the youngest county director in the state at that time. And I did a little calculation. He probably has been the longest-serving county extension director. Because he was such a young man, of course, he still is now. But, you know, he served as county extension director here in Pitt County for right at 27 years. There's lots of things that he did that people are unaware of, not only here in Pitt County, but he has served the extension organization as a leader. He's a visionary. He's done lots of things whenever called upon to do so, which is why we want to honor him tonight. He will join the likes of Michael Jordan, Oprah Winfrey, Dale Earnhardt, and even, I didn't know this until I did a little research, James Worthy, who is a Carolina guy. I had to say that. I didn't want to, but anyway, we went ahead and did that. So, anyway, we want to present Mitch tonight with the Order of the Longleaf Pine.
Wonderful.
And so, you all, we're calling you to celebrate. So this award, I don't know the song. There's a song that goes with it, and I'm not definitely going to attempt to sing it tonight. But this is signed by Governor Pat McCrory, and we want to congratulate him for his years of dedicated service to not only the Pitt County citizens, but the citizens of North Carolina. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Can we let his good-looking family get up?
Yes, if the family would like to come up.
Good day, look. You know we want them.
Can I sit down?
Wait just one second, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I didn't bring any written comments tonight, but I can still fill up about 45 minutes.
Don't do that.
Thank you all for this honor. I'm truly humbled. All I did for almost 32 years was get up and come to work. So I'm honored that I would receive this tonight. I'm especially honored to be joined by my family, my wife Lisa, my two sons Jonathan and Matthew, my mother, my sister over here, staff in the back. Thank you all for coming, and I'll be glad to take any questions. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you to the board for helping us pull this off, because he didn't have a clue. So, thank you.
Need a motion on the resolutions that are open?
My brother-in-law is here. I didn't say you vote. We vote for him.
I will. Yes, okay. This is on the resolution that we're fixing to consent now. We're voting.
We can ask on this next item for Neil Fox to come forward. I believe Brad Wilkinson's wife is here to represent him, and Katie Homerod could not make it tonight, had another engagement.
Do you want somebody to take a picture with your camera?
Before we get started while we're getting organized, this is a resolution for the Pitt County citizens that ran the Boston Marathon, which we know is a big accomplishment in and of its own. But to do it in a place where we had a terrorist attack to show that there was no fear by these citizens to get out there and run 26.2 miles, we're very proud of them, and that's what this resolution is here to commemorate. So, Madam Clerk?
Whereas, a resolution honoring Pitt County's 2015 Boston Marathon participants, whereas the Boston Marathon began in 1897 and is one of the world's oldest annual marathons, whereas the Boston Marathon is now in its 12th decade of running, and the Boston Athletic Association has organized the event since inception, whereas over 30,000 runners participated in the 119th running of the Boston Marathon, whereas the entire course runs through eight cities and towns, beginning in the town of Hopkinton and ending in the city of Boston, totaling to a 26.2 mile course, which is traditionally ran on Patriots' Day, whereas the Boston Marathon is considered to be one of the most prestigious marathon events known for showcasing some of the best athletes from around the world, whereas Pitt County had four citizens running in the 119th Boston Marathon for their first time, as held April 20th, Scott Elliott, Neil Fox, Katie Humard, and Brad Wilkinson, whereas Scott Elliott has been running for over 30 years for exercise and clarity of the mind. Boston was his fifth marathon. Mr. Elliott stated it to be a blessing to qualify and run in the Boston Marathon. Mr. Elliott finished the Boston Marathon on official time of 3 minutes, 48, 3 hours.
Put an anchor on him.
Forty-eight minutes and 45 seconds. Whereas Neil Fox began running in 2007, when he wanted to be in better physical condition and health, Boston was his 18th marathon. Mr. Fox stated to be part of a selective field as the Boston Marathon was an extraordinary opportunity. Mr. Fox finished the Boston Marathon on official time of 4 hours, 37 minutes and 11 seconds. Whereas Katie Humard began using running as her main physical activity approximately two and a half years ago. While in school, she stated it was a good way to blow off steam. Ms. Humard is a second-generation marathon runner. Ms. Humard finished the Boston Marathon with an official time of 3 hours, 25 minutes, and 21 seconds. Whereas Brad Wilkinson, who was a cross-country runner in high school, came back to run it to get in better shape after having a successful stem cell transplant to treat leukemia. Boston was his 10th full marathon. Mr. Wilkinson finished the Boston Marathon with an official time of 3 hours, 3 minutes, and 28 seconds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners applauds the participants' commitment to athletic excellence and sportsmanship, and does hereby honor and pay tribute to Scott Elliott, Neil Fox, Katie Humard, and Brad Wilkinson for their accomplishments of qualifying, running, and finishing the 119th Boston Marathon, adopted this 15th day of June 2015.
That's your sign?
Thank you.
Congratulations. You can all go rest now? Pictures? Speeches?
It's a long ways, 26.2 miles.
In the pouring rain.
Yes.
Wind chills.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
It was my worst time, but it was the best time.
I agree. Thank you.
Better than applauding you two more. I'll say you'll still be running.
What's next, Mr. Man?
Okay, next on the agenda, have a presentation from your tax administrator, Kathy Booker, regarding the 2016 reevaluation. She's going to give an overview as to kind of a quick who, what, why, where, and when, as to what we're embarking upon, what we have embarked upon, and what to expect or realize come January of 2016. I believe Ms. Booker has a PowerPoint presentation for you to run through.
This is going to be a brief overview, so if you have any questions, you can feel free to contact us at any time. Revaluation is the process of reappraisal that updates the assessed value of all properties to keep those values consistent with what the properties are worth in the current market. The goal of revaluation is for the assessed value to equal the market value. North Carolina law requires a revaluation to be completed at least once every eight years. The effective date of the new revaluation is January 1, 2016, and this will be four years from the last revaluation, which was in 2012. North Carolina law requires a revaluation to, oh, excuse me, to be completed at least once every eight years. Pitt County does it every four years. Some counties conduct the revaluing process more frequently to lessen the impact on taxpayers and to better maintain equality. Revaluation is conducted to ensure all properties are appraised or assessed equitably, because over time, some properties increase or decrease in value in comparison to others in the county. Revaluing ensures that all property owners are paying their fair share of the property tax burden based on the true market value of their property. Tax administration uses various tools to arrive at market value, including comparable property sales files, sales questionnaires, multiple listing services, revenue stamps, cost books, and ratio studies. North Carolina law requires appraisal of real and personal property at its true value in money, which is the market value. The law also establishes a uniform assessment standard. All real and personal property shall be assessed for taxation at its true value, and taxes levied on all counties and municipalities shall be levied uniformly on assessments. Each property's value will change at various rates depending upon numerous market factors. Your property appraisal may increase, decrease, or stay the same depending upon the changes that have occurred since the last revaluation. Tax administration is conducting the 2016 revaluation. Tax administration staff have many years of experience in property assessment and are familiar with the local marketplace in Pitt County. All real property owners will be mailed a revaluation notice in February of 2016. The background work for revaluing property began in January of 2014 and will be completed January 2016. The new tax values will be effective January 1, 2016. Tax bills with the new assessed values will be mailed in July 2016 and become due on September 1, 2016. Payment of these bills will become past due on January 6, 2017. There is no way at this time to determine how much your tax bill would be affected by the revaluation. The tax rate for fiscal year 2016-2017 will be determined by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners prior to July 1, 2016, and will be based on the level of services Pitt County provides its citizens and the revenue needed to support these services. Real property values will be finalized in late December 2015. The tax rate necessary will be computed based on the total county property assessment as determined by the There are two components to your tax bill. Each of these are set at different times of the year. The assessed value will be set on January 1. The tax rate will be the following July 1. Your assessed value times the tax rate set will equal your tax bill. Pitt County's ad valorem tax rate for fiscal year 1415 is 68 cents per $100 valuation, with an additional EMS district tax of 4.6 cents per $100 valuation. The tax rate for 2016 could decrease, increase, or stay the same. Again, the rate will be established during the fiscal year 1617 budget process. Any property owner has the right to appeal their assessment. Instructions for appeal will be included on your revaluation notice that you'll receive in February. There are three levels of appeal. The first is an informal hearing, and that is conducted by the Pitt County Tax Administration staff. The second is the Pitt County Board of Equalization and Review, and the third is the North Carolina Department of Revenue Property Tax Commission. The first level appeal is through informal hearings that start with a meeting with a Pitt County real property tax appraiser and the property owner to review the information to assure the assessment is at 100% of fair market value. North Carolina statutes place the burden of proof on the property owner to show the assessment is incorrect. The informal review process could take several months to complete. The second level appeal is to the Pitt County Board of Equalization and Review. The third level appeal is to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. The PTC, or Property Tax Commission, is a division of the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Your assessed value, there are a couple of examples we've given to you of how your appeal would be successful, and that is that your assessed value substantially exceeds the market value of your property, or your property has been assessed inequitably related to the assessment value of comparable properties. Reasons that are not acceptable is you consider the percentage of increase over the previous assessment too much, or you could not afford to pay the tax bill. Pitt County's role in the process is to inform citizens of the revaluation process by communicating through newspaper, TV, public meetings, to conduct a fair and impartial revaluation of property, and accept and investigate appeals thoroughly, accurately, and timely. In July of 2016, when the annual tax bill go out, there will be a revaluation insert with each one of these tax bills. And this is an example of what will be inserted into the tax bills in July. In August, well, August the 3rd, 2015, we will be submitting Schedule of Values to the Board of County Commissioners for review. August 17, 2015, will be a public hearing date for the Schedule of Values. And in September 14, the Board of County Commissioners is scheduled to adopt the Schedule of Values for the 2016 revaluation.
Thank you, Ms. Booker. Are there any questions from the Commissioners to Ms. Booker?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, as much as it has been recommended by the submitted motion to approve the resolution as attached, I so move.
Thank you for standing. I don't think we're to that one just yet. Anything else on this?
Now, you've already done the approval of your resolutions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Madam Attorney, it's been suggested for a closed session. If you'll take us there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between that attorney and public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, also under General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of employment of an individual public officer or employee, and finally, under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information pursuant to the laws of this state and the laws of the United States, were not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the North Carolina General Statutes, if you will so move.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Is there a motion from the Board?
Second.
Okay, folks, we're going to be in closed session for a few minutes to consider a few personnel items, and then we'll be right back. This shouldn't take very long. All right, we're back into open session now. The next item on our agenda is the public addresses to the Board. We have two people signed up right now, Mr. Jerry Jones. Madam Attorney, if you'll give us the rules for the public address.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. We ask that each speaker be allowed three minutes. I'll keep your time. Please state your name and address prior to speaking, and all comments should be informative and constructive. Please refrain from any inappropriate comments, profanity, or personal attacks, as such will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jerry Jones, and I live at 803 Brickyard Court. I come before you tonight asking you to consider changing or revising the pet licensing ordinance that was passed in 2014 for unincorporated areas of Pitt County. The fee that was imposed as a result of the K-9 control ordinance not only burdens the responsible K-9 owners, but clearly discriminates against a group of residents who do the right thing. Sadly, as quoted by Ron Allison, this became a funding source for the county and animal control services. Mr. Allison spoke at your March 24, 2014, meeting, giving this board facts about other counties that had licensing ordinances. He cited Buncombe County as one, but I checked this, and he should have said the city of Asheville and not the county. No fee exists. He also used Laurinburg, but this also is a city and not a county. I checked many counties for fees, and they simply do not exist or have been suspended due to lack of participation. One must assume this is because it doesn't work. If it worked, the municipalities in Pitt County would have been on board with the ordinance from the beginning, but they are not. It was stated that this was not a tax, just a fee, but when fees are generated for a funding source that all citizens have access to, it sure seems like a tax disguised with selective wording. Call it what you want, but I would hope most of you would agree that char- Call it what you want, but I would hope most of you would agree that charging a few to benefit everyone does not seem like a fair practice. Would this license give me precedence over my neighbor who doesn't own a dog? Finally, please ask yourself, why would people want a dog from the animal shelter when more fees are being tacked on to an already existing state law requiring you to get rabies vaccination? There's already clinics set up yearly because people can't even afford to get a rabies shot now. Some are even resorting to going out of the county to get veterinary services, causing veterinary businesses in this area to lose money. In closing, I would ask you to please consider taking action on this matter. This license ordinance only discriminates and burdens responsible citizens who live in, for the most part, the country. If you were in our shoes, would you think this is fair and just? Certain citizens should never be singled out just to create a funding source for the county. Thank you for listening, and may God grant you wisdom in your choices.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Greetings. My name is Sarah Deans, and I live in the northeast part of Pitt County, 3788 Kirkman Road, Robertsonville. It's a Robertsonville address, but I'm still in the county. Thank the Lord. I would like to say, first of all, I'm very disappointed that we stood in the hall for 45 minutes. It's my daughter's 12th birthday, and she has an awesome supper awaiting her and a party, but this is too important not to be here and speak. I made the effort to be here. It's about a 25-minute drive to get here, and I've invested the time and her birthday to be here, so I would ask you in future, please don't do that to your citizens. Thank you. Like I said, I've never been in trouble with the law. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I pay taxes like every, not every, but every citizen. I'm bothered, I'm hurt. I really thought that this would be rethought. I did get a notice in the mail. It's a final notice. It is saying that this is your notice that if we do not receive this acquired amount of money, if it's not paid to Pitt County before June 12, 2015, we may pursue this matter with legal action. I am a mother of three. Like I said, I work. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and this really hurt me to the core. To piggyback on what Mr. Jones said, it is not fair to penalize those that do follow the law, because my two dogs go to the vet regularly and are vaccinated. I'm punished, and I don't appreciate it, even though it's just a miniscule amount of money. The point is, there are people that have dogs with mange, that are pregnant, walking around Pitt County, that they're, someone is responsible for, and they are not taking that initiative. I would like to add that I have been a volunteer with the Pitt County Humane Society when it was at Bobby Parsons' house a long time ago, when I was a teenager, and even as a young adult before I had children. So I am well aware of the problem in Pitt County, and I know that there is a way to do this, but taxing us, the responsible dog owners, is not fair. I did ask a worker at the animal shelter when I went to pay my money, because I don't want to be held in legal action. I did ask her, I said, just out of curiosity, do you have more cats or more dogs here? She said, cats. So why is this being imposed on dog owners? That's my question. I'm just trying to get it all together. It's very upsetting to me. I'm asking that you rethink the licensing ordinance for people like me and people who do follow the law. How about go after those that do not have vaccinated animals? How about those that are letting their horses starve? I did call and report of a home that had two horses being starved, and nothing was being done about it. Please do not punish those who follow the law. Go after those without rabies vaccines. Thank you.
Ms. Deans, before you go, what's your daughter's name? We want to tell her happy birthday.
Morgan Brookdeans, and she was born on Father's Day 12 years ago.
Morgan, we're sorry for holding you up. Happy birthday. And hopefully, next year, you won't have to be here for it. Thank you for coming.
I pray not. Thank you.
That's all that was signed up. Is there anyone that would like to speak, Ms. Harris?
Brenda Harrison, my information's on file. I wanted to take you back to the fact that the Sheriff's Department is asking for money. I wasn't here the other night. I want you to know that there's never been a time in our lives that police officers are in more danger and share. And I would say that you look at yourself and you say, how much of the county's money did our county pay for my medical? Because you voted yourself medical to pay because it's better service than the Medicaids that some of you, Medicare that some of you can get. So what I'd like for you to kind of look at is that if you go up to a gas station, not very many people are going to say, I'll pay you at the end of this, you know, we're a little bit short. What we need to start learning is what the details are. Chairman Webb, you are a bright, bright administrator. I see the good in you, and I'm asking that you look for the details, and I'll share one more thing. Ms. Booker and I have no issues, because I have absolutely learned that it's the facts that we're going to build things on. But when you start saying we're doing things right, I'm going to take you to that package I sent you, 200 Hooker Road. It was the tax value Mr. Webb was 245,000, and I even sent a federal agent by, and he said, Brenda, it's a skylight. I said, yeah, because it doesn't have a roof. It should have been reduced to about 60,000, but that lady lost that house at 245,000. She was a minority. I yelled, I screamed, you did nothing, because you didn't want the details. And the devil is in the details, folks. But guess what? A white man bought it. And I'm not saying this in any racial slur at all, but this is fact. The tax value fixed, part of the building is fixed and operated, is less than 100,000. We've got to look at the bad, the good, and the ugly when we start with taxes. We've got to understand the stuff that staff is not telling you. If you ever decide to say, Brenda, come to the table, when we got finished, I teach you something, because the devil is in the details. It's in the details of where that 173 million dollars is going that's supposed to be indigent. It's in the details of what Vidant's credit standing is today. It's in the details, but we could use some of that 173 million dollars, couldn't we, in some of the programs? It's time for us to go back and say, you got a transfer agreement. We need to get it a little bit more honest, so that the burden is not on the citizen. I have been before you, and some of you think I'm a pain in the bedouzi, and I probably am going to stay until I win. Thank you.
Is anyone else that wishes to address the Board that didn't sign up earlier? All right. Items for report, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things to run down quickly. Under Manager's Report, next meeting dates, the month of July. You'll have one meeting on Monday, July 20, at 9:00 a.m. That's due to the Fourth of July as well, then the NACO Conference later that month. In August, your first meeting will be Monday, the Third, at 9:00 a.m.
Scott, they're not here, and you're in the back.
Okay. Again, next meeting dates, July 20, August 3, 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. both respectfully. Item B, we have a workers' comp case settlement. This is a case of the Health Department, and we're reporting out that the county entered into a final settlement agreement and obtained a release of all claims, and this workers' compensation matter in the amount of $65,000. This claim involved injuries sustained by a former employee, Sylvia Reddick, when she was involved in a motor vehicle accident while working in, within a county vehicle at the time. Subrogation against the driver who caused the accident is pending in order to offset some of the costs. That is a reporting out on that particular case. On item C, the Vidant Health Center, Vidant Medical Center, the new CEO, Dr. Michael Waldrum, they are inviting the Board of Commissioners to a meet-and-greet lunch on July 20, following your regular meeting. That'll be at 12:30 over at the corporate offices on Smith Boulevard, and the Board is invited to that. I think the clerk has contacted the Board for a head count on that. On item D, the Pitt Community College General Bond Obligation, this is the bond question that went before the voters in 2014, I believe it was. There was affirmative to borrowing 19.9 million dollars. We have a bond calendar. We, as staff, are working with Bond Counsel and the outside financial advisor in terms of working with Pitt Community College to put the steps in motion to go to a bond closing, probably in September of this year. We will bring this back formally before you and later this summer, looks like August 3, where you adopt the resolution providing details of the bond. Just wanted you to be aware, as staff, that we are considering moving that forward and taking the appropriate actions and steps that are necessary. On item E, we've talked for a while about coming before you regarding a presentation, and this really won't be a presentation, this will be more information that's being presented to you regarding mandated versus non-mandated services. The concept that the majority of the services that a county government provides are mandated either by federal law or state law. There's a very small percentage that are actually, they're non-mandated or optional. Madam Clerk, do you have that handout? What she's going to give you, and this again is more for you to take and just to reference later, we found a good reference tool from Buncombe County regarding what they call core services. It gives all the core services of a county, and this is pretty reflective of Pitt County as well. It gives the statutory reference to it. It references whether it is mandated or not, and to what extent that service is mandated. And if the Board would like a fuller presentation on this, we could add this to the agenda at a later time, but this is more, it's about 20 pages long. So if you will look at this, and then if you have any questions, we can make a more formal presentation if you'd like. Similar to that, another chart I'd like to pass out regards city and county services, and I believe, Kimberly, do you have that one? Okay. Well, I will pass that one out at another time, maybe in your weekly info packet. We have a list of services that counties provide, a list of services that cities provide, and also a list of services that are authorized for both to provide, to give you an idea of what the distinction between those are. That kind of goes with the mandated, non-mandated in an indirect fashion. Next on the agenda, the, within DSS, in terms of an update regarding food stamps and Medicaid, as you're aware, we're still in the middle of implementing NCFAST, their computer program to statewide that is allowing us to be, hopefully to be more efficient with this. The State, Secretary of DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services, was given a warning letter by the federal government regarding the state's processing time of food nutrition applications, basically food stamps. We in Pitt County actually are in compliance with the percentages, but there is some threat that if the entire state is not in compliance, that the state may be sanctioned statewide. There is some discrepancy in terms of the deadlines, in terms of seven days and 30 days, in terms of people having the, whether a claim has to be processed, or whether the individual who's made the claim actually can purchase food and eat within that period of time. So there's some, the state is working to get that internal discrepancy settled. In terms of Medicaid, there are currently no sanctions or no warning letters, per se, coming forth, but Medicaid is the next, the current bearer that we're trying to work through in terms of caseloads. Pitt County has its share of caseloads. We've got approximately 3,500 regular reviews that we're trying to work towards getting in compliance by the end of July, and are working with, working the health part overtime, as well as bringing in outside social workers to work weekends, so we continue to work that. Wanted you to be aware of what's brewing on the state level with that. Two other things not on the agenda. One deals with the NACO Conference. NACO is the National Association of Counties. Their annual conference coming up in July will be held in Charlotte Mecklenburg County. They're asking the Board of Commissioners to designate a voting delegate, and right now, we have Commissioner McLaughlin, Mary Perkins-Williams, and Commissioner Farley attending that, as well as, I don't know, Commissioner Webb, are you? Okay. The, so we need a voting delegate to be designated out of those three or out of, or from the chairman by motion, so we can submit that.
I move that Melvin be our representative voting delegate.
And one last item, just want to bring to your attention some correspondence that came from the County Commissioners Association on Friday, from the leadership regarding House Bill 117, this is the North Carolina Competes Act, and basically, this is not a legislative concern for Pitt County, but wanted you to be aware that the association is soliciting input regarding any modifications that the County Commissioners Association could speak into this bill. There's several parts to it. One deals with JDIG modifications. JDIG is an acronym for Job Development Infrastructure Grants. Second part is sales tax changes in terms of expanding the base of services in which sales tax would be collected on such things as services dealing with grooming, training, boarding of animals, veterinary services, advertising, as such. There's also a proposal within this House Bill 117 to phase out the sales tax reimbursement that nonprofits receive, i.e., as large as a nonprofit as the Vidant Medical Center to as small as a nonprofit as your local church or United Way. Right now, there's $666 million in reimbursements to sales tax that is paid that is then reimbursed by the Department of Revenue to these nonprofits. They are proposing that by the year 2020, that this amount be reduced down to 15 million from $666 million. And these monies would go both to the state and local governments. When local, we're talking about cities and counties. In terms of, another part of this on page, next page, distribution of sales tax revenue to local governments, there's a proposed shift on that from point of, from per capita, from point of collection to per capita, another part of the bill. And then the last part of it deals with local options, sales tax options for counties. Currently, Pitt County, out of the current sales tax that's levied, two and one-quarter pennies comes back to Pitt County. There's an option here as part of this proposed bill to allow Pitt County, by referendum before the voters in Pitt County, to levy another quarter cent sales tax for specific purposes, as they outline, everything from public school capital to teacher and teaching assistant salaries and supplements, community colleges, as such. So I wanted the Board to be aware that their association is soliciting input on this by, I think tomorrow it is. Right now, in all of these different areas of this bill, Pitt County comes out in the good, especially in the sales tax, going from point of sale to the per capita. So I know that was a lot, but wanted to present it to you anyway. With that, Mr. Chairman, let's all head.
Thank you, Ms. Booker.
The Pitt County fiscal year to date, through May the 31, 2015, the combined collection rate for real and personal property is 98.41, as compared to last year on real, personal, and registered motor vehicles was 97.86. So we remain slightly ahead of last year. We had only one month in this past year so far that we have not been ahead, but we are on schedule to finish slightly ahead of the collection rate from last year at the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. Is there a motion on?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whaley?
Good evening. I just have a quick update on Pitt County Animal Services. In regards to shelter planners, we have made the initial payment of $5,000 to them, and the county did submit the site plans, so now we will wait for that first phase to hear back from them and see what some of the recommendations will be. As far as our statistics for Pitt County Animal Services, reference dog bites, we answered 24 total dog bites. For the animal control calls, we answered 204, with 60 of them being referenced to canine control ordinance violations. The shelter took in 216 animals. We are still operating at a maximum capacity. 114 of those animals were adopted out, reclaimed, or transferred, and 103 were euthanized. And licensing, as of June 12, we collected $39,460. We have billed $5,543. We have $4,395 as paid, 891 past due, and 257 as currently owing.
Any questions for Ms. Whaley? This was for a report only, so we don't need a motion. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
Commissioners. Before you, you have the monthly financial report for the general fund as of May 31, 2015. Pleased to report that through 11 months of fiscal activity, which would be approximately 91.67% of the fiscal year, we've collected revenues at a rate of 89.9%, and our expenditures are at 89.4%. You will notice that our difference between revenues and expenditures is, the gap is somewhat closing through the month of May, as we expect to occur as we approach year end. I will bring to your attention that we do book our revenues and expenditures on a cash basis. basis, and during the month of May, we actually had three payrolls. So we saw somewhat of a spike in our expenditures for the month of May. We will have two payrolls during the month of June, expect that to flatten somewhat. If you look at the last fiscal year, just a reminder, absent the hospital transaction, the bond transaction, we were able to add just under $1 million to fund balance outside of the transfer. I anticipate that this year will be probably anywhere 800 to a million additional added to fund balance. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, observation.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I've ever seen the closeness of revenues collected and revenues expanded as those percentages are tonight.
89.9 and 89.4.
This is correct.
Again, it's tight, but it does, it does show that we're on track to spend what we're earning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holder. Motion on the conservative agenda.
Motion to approve conservative agenda.
Second. Let's vote.
Conservative agenda. Go on, the conservative agenda.
Hit it one more time, Mr. Hammond, it's not, there you go, thank you. All right, first up, under items for decision, we have the budget amendment, Sheriff's Office, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion at this time, and if I get a second, then if there's some discussion, we can move on after that. I'd like to move that we pay all of the Sheriff's Office employees the full balance of accrued compensatory time and holiday time, bringing all the balances down to zero. And further, to pay the sheriff himself the full balance of his accrued holiday time. It is part of this motion that these amounts be paid from the lapsed salaries in the sheriff's 2014, 2015 budget.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Here and now, let's vote.
I don't know whether it's appropriate or not, but the comments that the, we've still got to.
Confirm again.
That the manager had, I don't know if he would like to read those, or if we even need to at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to make another motion. I support the motion that Ms. Ward made, but I would also like to make the motion that our Sheriff's Office followed the procedure laid out in the county's personnel ordinance, as is stated in Section 91, that says that no one can accumulate more than 60 hours of banked leave or holiday pay. And I would further include in that motion that we receive a quarterly report as to what the accumulation of those dollars are on a quarterly basis. And again, I'm not trying to micromanage the Sheriff's Office, but I just think we need to know exactly what is going on, on an ongoing basis, because I don't want us to come up with another $350,000 liability.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion on that?
Yes, I think we talked earlier on this matter somewhat, and the sheriff is surprised of what this is, Jimmy. I talked with the sheriff today about this, in an effort to see that and trust that this amount of payment that should have been made previously had, will not happen again.
Good.
Thank you.
Ms. Ward.
The other thing is the quarterly report. We do similar reports with the Pitt County schools, and we see it as a really positive thing. Pitt Community College does a report to us during the year, and so does Vada Health. Is that it?
Community College, Pitt County Schools, and Vada Health.
Right. And I think it would be appropriate, and at that time, most of those people get to showcase some things that are going on also. So we would hope that you would look at it that way.
Any further comments?
My only question about this is, is the motion to just have the quarterly update, or is it to bind the policy?
Say what now?
Is the motion to bind the policy, 91, on this, or is it to ask for quarterly?
Both.
Because my concern is the fluidity of the events. I don't want them to have to check in. Madam Attorney, you look like you want to tell me something.
Well, just to say that this board can make this motion, and it would serve as a recommendation to the sheriff, because he's separately elected. So he's not required by law to follow that direction. He can receive that as your recommendation of this board and your expectation of the board, and it's certainly appropriate for you to monitor it. But as a separately elected official, he sets the policies for his department.
Yes, ma'am. I think we could avoid the whole thing if we've gone with one of Mr. Owens' previous ideas was to pay it as it's earned. That's my opinion on it. Complete the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hammond.
We stay covered by being informed, is that correct?
That is correct. Mr. Manager.
Just to make a comment, in this current year, $120,000 was budgeted in overtime for the Sheriff's Office. Through various budget amendments, that was doubled to 240,000. I think to date, so far, they've spent about 187 so far. When we were developing the recommendation for this particular line item for the new budget beginning July 1, I had extrapolated the numbers, and right now, $190,000 is what is budgeted in overtime for the sheriff, based upon what he's used so far this year. He'd asked for 252,000, but my recommendation back to you was 190. So based upon what he's spent so far, he should have adequate overtime dollars within the budget to meet the need, based upon the current year's experience. Depending upon, I guess, vacancies he may have as such, but we did increase from 120 to 190 in the budget, if you, assuming you're going to adopt the budget that is before you tonight.
Does that take into account the comp time that was earned this year?
That is comp time.
Okay.
Well, in your, as effect of this action just made, you have zeroed out the comp time, holiday balances.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that?
Mr. Owens.
Today's discussion that I've talked about previously referenced 86 hours every two weeks, if my time is correct. And that, when you get 86 hours, correct me, Sheriff, now if I misinterpreted what you and I talked about. 86 hours, two weeks' time, you can go up six hours beyond that without any, has to be paid, it's overtime, but no penalty for it. Is that right, Sheriff?
I think what you're trying to say is, we follow the federal guidelines, we work on an 86-hour rule. Anything past 86 hours goes in the time and a half.
But you've got six hours of window there, didn't you tell me today?
Yes, straight down. Yes, so he's still had to be compensated.
Now, what Mr. Gash is talking about should alleviate any of that error, if you and I discuss right this afternoon, is my impression. If it's not, you come back.
I'm kind of confused, so I'm not sure what Mr. Gash said.
I think the salaries are based on 80 hours, but you don't have to kick in time and a half until 86. So 80, the 81st hour would be out of the overtime budget, even though it wouldn't be at time and a half.
Same intent, is there where it's 86 or 81? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Elliott.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is continuation of the fiscal year 1516 budget from the public hearing that was held on Tuesday, June the 9th. At that meeting, you received public comments regarding this budget, and then had discussion in terms of that input, as well as other comments you had. So based upon that, I have gone back and have considered your input, as well as that of the public, and have before you some proposed modifications to the fiscal year budget for next year. The one-page handout is kind of a synopsis as to what I'm recommending. As presented June 9th, you had a budget total of $223,823,547. I'm recommending to increase that by $132,683. That money on the next line coming down, in working with the tax administrator and looking at the tax base, we, she has identified additional ad valorem value in the tax base, which then competes to an additional $132,683. So with that, within that box, the reallocated new expenditures, recommending for Pitt County schools, increasing the current expense by an additional 50,000, which takes them to the full million to meet their fixed costs portion. Within the public safety arena, I had proposed in the July 1 budget previously for the county to pay six holidays that a non-exempt shift worker may have to work. What I'm proposing now is to allow, within public safety, we're talking all EMS workers, all 911 workers, jailers, and Sheriff's Office employees who work holidays, who are required to work holidays, again, non-exempt shift workers, to allow them to be paid if they need to be compensated all 12 days next year, eight hours a day, even though they work a 12-hour shift. I realize that's another point of contention, but right now, I think this would be taking it to a point that we have not been at in terms to the positive. So with this, banked holiday time should not be an issue, should not be banked, because they would be paid for those hours worked. So the total expenditure is 128,347. The difference between that 128,347 and what we realized in the tax base, the 132, as you're aware, a small portion of the tax, the 0.07 cents, goes to the Development Commission. So we would increase their expenditures by about 4,336, if I'm remembering right. All right, I'm sorry, that's the EMS, EMS difference. But there is a small piece that goes to the Development Commission out of the 132 that was brought before you. So what you have attached next is the budget ordinance based upon this recommendation, and that's where I'm at right now, unless there's additional board input or discussion.
Any discussion?
Is the county manager asking for approval at this time?
Yes.
That is up to you as a board.
So move.
I'd like to second that.
What are we moving?
Motion and second on approval of the budget.
With these addendums.
This is the approval or not approval of the entire budget.
Correct.
With this addendum, right, that you just brought forth?
I'm second to Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, certainly because I think this is a great budget, and certainly it doesn't pose any tax increase towards citizens of Pitt County.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Any further discussion? Mr. Coulson.
I still believe that it shorts the deputies in, by not taking into account an additional pay raise to them.
Anyone else want to be heard?
Take in the $50,000 for the current, for the schools, right?
And I'll just say, I agree with Mr. Coulson on this, when, you know, we talked about, we've talked about it all year, we talked about it for three years, and increasing, getting that base salary up, and I agree with you, Mr. Coulson. I don't think, I know that we got the COLA and the merit increases, but we talked about normalizing and competing in the market. And I'm glad we are going to pay the holidays, but you have to work it to get it, so it doesn't really raise you up if you end up off those days, because there's a lot of positions that don't work those days.
This is it.
We've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I want to ask a question.
Mr. Hammond.
These additional holiday pay, the holiday pay, I see the Pitt County schools, the sheriff, the detention center, and 9/11 communication are the ones that is in the revised budget. Mr. Manager, what was presented on June 9, and what is being revised as of June 15, is $132,683. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Next up, we have Ms. Elliott, Social Services.
I'll try and be brief. Let me get this microphone down low enough. This is our in-home bid process. We do this every year. We receive a little over $300,000 typically to provide in-home services to elderly and disabled folk in the community. We have gone out to bid. Our current contractor at us chose not to bid. We had four bidders, action staffing at 1350 per hour, Health Pro at 1245 per hour, Bayada at 1525 per hour, and interim at 1350 per hour. Interviews were conducted with all bidders, references were completed, recommendations were done, and we are recommending that interim be awarded the contract at this point. And again, it's an estimated amount of money, because the state budget has not been adopted yet, so that could vary a little bit based on what the state does. We chose interim because they have a strong presence in Greenville. They have been here approximately 27 years. They have offices throughout eastern North Carolina, so they can pull employees from surrounding counties to serve our outlying residents, plus do out-of-county things when needed. 97 percent of their staff are certified CNAs, all are bonded, they're available 24/7. They have an RN in-house who can conduct initial and quarterly reviews of the clients and train. We are recommending a one-year contract with an option to extend for up to two additional years.
Thank you. Pleasure, the board.
I have one question.
Ms. Williams.
This last name of the owner, is this anybody we know? This, is this, it's a winner.
No relation to me.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
No relation.
Because we get to see who won here, right? Okay, thank you.
No known relation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to make a motion. This is a contract that we have to approve.
And I second that.
So I move that we accept.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, but before you get into this matter, I will abstain on this issue.
Noted.
And I don't know if it's appropriate, you can tell me, Mr. Rhodes, if we're going to hear any new information, but we did talk about this at the June 1 meeting, and we unanimously approved this. And what we have developed is an agreement that we had to do in a contract for the engineering firm. So if we can do that, Madam Attorney, go on.
I think it would be beneficial to just briefly have him go through a very short PowerPoint presentation for the sake of the public and the maps that are.
That's good. Thank you.
Madam Attorney, just for a quick point of clarification, if he abstains, will he be counted with the majority, or will it separate out?
He will not be counted at all.
Just want to make sure we didn't need to excuse him from the vote.
You could excuse him if you'd like, it's been board practice to excuse, but because he has asserted a conflict in the matter, it wouldn't count anyway.
Okay, we're fine where we are then. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Quickly, we'll go through this. Just on your screen right now, you can actually see the area that's to be served by the $3 million grant agreement that you entered into at our last meeting with the state, and this is to provide sanitary sewer service to the Candlewick Area Sanitary District. It not only has a portion of that area, this is the area shown in red, but it also extends outside of that area, across Stanton'sburg Road into Pine Ridge subdivision. So again, got a little bit on both sides of the sanitary district boundary. We have several milestones, and one's already been met, of course, with your approval of the contract at the last meeting. We had to have that into the state by June 8. We beat it by four days. That's been executed by the state now on June 4. The next big milestone, and one of the items that I'll mention in a minute, is the engineering contract, but our preliminary engineering report is due within, by early October. We need to have this back in house within a couple of months, so that's been included in your engineering contract. Several other milestones, but basically, in a nutshell, we have to complete this project within three years. The inter-local agreement, that actually spells out the roles and responsibilities between the county and the Candlewick Area Sanitary District, and your attorney's been involved more with that. We do have Rita Leggett here tonight that's representing the Candlewick Area Sanitary District. That board has reviewed and is suggesting or recommending the execution of this particular document. Janice, I don't care.
Yes, briefly, the document really does two main things. It authorizes the county to accept these grant funds for the benefit of the district, for the county to contract with an engineer, which is what we're further talking about tonight, and for the county to manage all of the finances and close out the project with the expectation that a. to manage all of the finances and close out the project with the expectation that upon closeout, we'll transfer ownership of the completed project to the Candlewick Area Sanitary District. It requires the district to participate in the meetings, to participate in the process, and then to own, operate, and maintain, or contract for that operation and maintenance once the facilities are completed. Further in the map that you've referenced, it requires the Candlewick Area Sanitary District to take steps towards incorporating those homes outside their district that will be served into their district, which they've already begun to do, and that agreement has been approved by Candlewick District already.
Thank you.
And the second item that's included in this abstract is for the engineering/technical services contract, and on your screen, you can see the various contract amounts that go with this, I've mentioned the preliminary engineering report, that will be due back to staff on August the 15th, the sewer system design is included as well, then we get into construction administration, as well as some additional services that may be required outside the scope of services that's been included, and some reimbursement, reimbursable expenses, those are primarily for fees or permits that may be required as necessary to design the system. All total, it's a bit over half a million dollars, and we're seeking approval, both of the inter-local agreement tonight, as well as the contract with McDavid and Associates as being the engineer for this project. There may be a few minor changes, we've been working on these contracts and amendments throughout, even today, we're also asking that if there are any minor edits, that the county manager be authorized to make those.
And we have established what those minor edits would be in conversations from the printing of the package until now, with regard to the inter-local agreement, that minor edit would be removal of paragraph 10, and then the remainder of the agreement would be, as you've seen it, included in your package, and with regard to the engineering agreement, there are about a dozen or so changes that do not affect the substance of the documents you've received, but make minor modifications to create consistency between the grant documents that the county signed this agreement, and to bring it on field with the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Mr. Chairman, there's still building in that area, and I thought when we finished the approval, that the building of the properties that was going to be included was already finished.
The Candlewick Sanitary District is within an older subdivision area, to my knowledge, there are not any new structures within that boundary.
Ms. Ward.
I think he may be referencing the comment that they will make it available to surrounding residents, is that not correct?
Yes, and those are also existing homes.
Yes, they are already existing, they're not new.
That's right.
Ms. Garris.
Yes, this is something we've been talking about for a long time, so I make a motion that we follow the recommendations here with the inter-local agreement and the contract, and that we authorize our county manager to negotiate further revisions.
Further discussion, let's vote. Mr. Owens.
Oh, he's got abstained, I forgot.
You have it. I gave you a notice, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Book.
In your packet, you have the sample of each one of the inter-local agreements, of the three different ones, and each municipality has approved those, so they need your approval at this time.
I second that.
Second, let's vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Elliott.
Yes, on item 6, North Carolina East Alliance, this item was presented to you by John Chafee back on June the 1st, this is the follow-up to that meeting, the Pitt County Development Commission did meet on this later that day on June the 1st, and heard a similar presentation by Mr. Chafee, who is the President and CEO of the North Carolina Eastern Alliance. The Development Commission has voted after hearing the presentation and examining the metrics that were developed, and is recommending that the county continue its membership in the Eastern Alliance, and we have three more years until Pitt County would actually have to make an actual appropriation, right now, we are living on dues, or on revenues that they are holding for Pitt County. These are state revenues that were received prior to, after the following three fiscal years, if the county decides to stay in, you would have to make an appropriation based upon a per capita formula that they've come up with. The Development Commission did say they would review this annually, and if they feel like at any time, a year from now, if Pitt County was not being served to the degree it needed to by the services of the Eastern Alliance, that they would make a recommendation to you then to pull out, and then we could receive the portion there of this left of dues that they're holding of ours.
I have a question.
Ms. Williams.
I was asking, where does this fall into that memorandum of understanding that we talked about when I first came on the board, and they did not honor that, and they kept it back, it seemed like my memory sort of brought something like that, where is that?
Right, we developed a MOU, or inter-local agreement, proposed it to them, Mr. Yuhas and myself met with John Chafee in regard to this, we thought we were in agreement to it being adopted, it was then presented to his board, the Eastern Alliance, and I think they figured with, I think at that point, they had 13 different counties, and there now is it 29, Monda, that if they had to enter into an inter-local or MOU with every single county or jurisdiction, that they wouldn't be able to get their job done from their perspective. We, in the meantime, told Mr. Chafee that we were going to still continue to use the metrics developed in that document to judge how they're performing services on behalf of Pitt County. So it's out there, it's not adopted or executed, but it's in force as far as we're concerned, in terms of how we're judging their level of service.
Mr. Garris.
Yes, this is another item we've been talking about now for over a year, and we've gone back and forth on it, so I would like to make a motion that we remain in the alliance for three years, which we've already paid for, that money's already in their bank, and that we review the performance of the alliance in 12 months, and then we make the decision as to whether or not we will retain our membership.
I second that motion, and part of that's.
Hold your vote for a second, go ahead with your comments, we're just trying to clear the last vote.
I was just going to say that I agree with the motion, and particularly since the Development Commission requested it, but we're just talking about one year.
They don't want to honor their memorandum of understanding that they come up with, and they don't have to do that, what you going to do when another group come up like that?
That's on the tax collection agreement. What's on your board?
Mr. Coulson.
Oh, Dave, tell Dave we can't move forward till he's.
We need you to vote on the inter-local.
Didn't they try and get?
It's not taken, Mr. Hammond, I have a weak battery in that thing, Mr. Owens does too.
Now you have to, there you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Coulson, go ahead with your comments, and the manager, and we have a motion second
on the floor, is that correct, Madam Attorney?
It's correct.
We already have three years of money invested in this?
We had five, you're living in year two, and you have three left beginning July 1, I believe it's about $80,000 per year, $240,000 total left, quote, in the bank of the Eastern Alliance.
Is there any way of getting a refund?
By, well, if you were to vote tonight not to continue membership in the Eastern Alliance, then those monies would be returned, they have to be used for economic development purposes, so Mr. Yuhas and the Development Commission would come up with a plan of how to target those monies for purposes here in Pitt County.
So when I vote no, is it, it's not going to hurt us if, okay.
Unless there's five of you that vote.
That's what I was talking about, if they didn't honor their memorandum of understanding, and what you going to do when another group come up and they make a memorandum of understanding and then don't follow it, are you still going to just go on and support?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Garris.
And we're not talking about a little piece of change here.
I understand your concern, and I have the same concern, however, we have been talking about this for over a year now, and the Development Commission Board discussed, held a special meeting to simply discuss this issue one final time a couple of weeks ago, and they voted for us to go on and approve and be a member of this alliance, and therefore, I want to support our Development Commission Board and move forward. Again, there's this issue of us being a team player, and if we pull out of this, then we would not be considered to be a team player for the district, and again, I just think it's the right thing to do at this point in time, but again, I have the same concerns and emotional aggravation that you have about that MOU.
And you are the liaison to that.
And I am the liaison to that.
Mr. Owens.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the fact that our Development Commissioner has weighed in on this various different times, and probably more astute than we are as to all the issues surrounding there too, and so I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, no further comments, Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Yes, the packet I passed out, just want to bring the board's attention, Commissioner Owens had asked what the Eastern Alliance has done for Pitt County and all the counties in the alliance, this is the information we got back, it's more tailored to Pitt County, then it's more of a brochure than about their services they provide across the eastern North Carolina, but did you want to reference that this was in response to your request?
Thank you, all right, let's vote. Mr. Hammond, need you to vote on the Easter Alliance? We're voting on the participation in the North Carolina Easter Alliance? Next issue, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next issue, or next item on the agenda, resolution supporting Governor McCrory's Connect North Carolina Bond Initiative, this is put on the agenda at the request of you as the chairman, there's a resolution that's attached to this, the self-explanatory, I did want to pass out to you, we pulled this off of the internet, actually, we received the same presentation materials at the governor's visit a couple weeks back when he was at Pitt Community College in regards to this item, this concerns a $2.85 billion bond initiative that the governor is trying to get on the ballot for this fall, of which you have 1.48 billion of that is for infrastructure improvements, and then 1.37 billion, the remaining balance, that would be for a highway bond. For what is being passed out, if you will flip to page 10 of 26, you'll see that Pitt County, out of 100 counties, is classified in the northeast region, and they do give a partial list of some of the projects they're proposing for our region, one thing in particular to Pitt County is a new medical examiner's office in Pitt County, if I remember the price tag on that, that was a $12 million office, if I recall that correctly, they have a hangar for Elizabeth City, for the US Coast Guard, improvements to the Goose Creek State Park in Beaufort County, improving the Pettigrew State Park, improving Merchants Mill Pond State Park, there's dollars for Elizabeth City State University facility repairs and renovations, there's dollars in here for Dickinson Avenue here in Greenville, and also dollars associated with US 17 and US 158 in terms of improvements as such.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Coulson.
Is this going to be like all of the other bond issues that come from the state, where they get people to vote for it, boards to vote for it and everything, and then they come back at the last minute and say, now you got to have so many matching dollars?
It shouldn't, the way this bond is structured, it's not.
Well, they never say it, and it's not, it probably is not in here either, but we'll get a surprise down the road.
We should not, the bond is structured in the way that they're borrowing money within the budget, not from the budget, but within their debt abilities, and the way it's structured, the state, if it passes through the legislature as is, the state will have less debt in five years than they do now, there's no tax increase, and the, and these are already, and the projects that they chose are projects where all the studies are done, they're ready to go, they don't have to spend more money on it.
But what guarantee, Mr. Chairman, do we have that they won't at the last minute come up there and ask for matching funds? Oh yeah, we'll give you this for education, but oh, you got to match it with 10 million here, or 6 million there, whatever, they do it all the time, what would make me think that they won't do it on this too? I understood, and I heard what you said, but I don't trust them, frankly.
They would have to go by the, if they commit to this, I assume they have to follow the law, but I don't want to speak for the legislature.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms.?
I believe the manager could enlighten us a little bit about money that we have received through and by this, am I correct in that, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Manager?
No monies have yet been received from this, but other bond borrowings that the state has done on a state level, Pitt Community College has benefited from that, if there is a matching requirement on this, the good news is, because of the $19.9 million bond referendum, and the $25 million COPS certificates of participation that we're getting ready to borrow for Pitt County schools, not that there's any K-12 in this, I don't think, for construction, but we do have some matching funds, especially at the community college level, that would leverage if it's 10%, 20%, whatever it may be.
Okay.
The way it's currently structured, there should be no, from the governor's office, there should be no matching funds, we're supporting what the governor's asking for, once it gets down to Jones Street, it could change completely, and then our position could change as well, but we're just voting on what's been presented to us through Connect NC, not through potential future actions.
So when I vote this, and I find out that it's the other way, then.
Once, if, once and if we get a motion, correct.
Jimmy, you going to make the motion?
The other point that makes me support this is, it will be a voter referendum, the citizens of North Carolina will make this decision, and I think that any time the citizens can make a decision, then I'm supportive of it, so I make a motion, we'll prove it.
I'll second it.
Motion second, any further discussion?
And no federal judge will overturn it.
Should have a copy of the contract before you, if you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Dr. Service here, as well as my jail administrator, through renegotiation of contract, we were able to lower the jail health care services by $191,000.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Please, I have a chance to read this, and I certainly think this contract is within reason, and they have provided services with us for many years, and the current contract also provides the medical, psychiatry, and dental services inside the walls of Pitt County Detention Center, so I move that we approve this.
I'll second it.
Thank you, and thanks to the sheriff for renegotiating this and saving over $200,000.
Where does the savings go to, does that go back to the general fund, or is it staying in the sheriff's?
Well, actually, right now, with this approved, I believe Sheriff, or Donna, the way that the budget has currently been passed, this $191,000 is not reflected as a reduction in that line item, right, so it's, right now, it's, the savings is within this line item, within the New Year's budget, so there's $200,000 sitting in this line item that doesn't need to be there officially for jail health services, since this is approved after the budget is adopted.
You just approved the budget, yes, there are, I wouldn't say that exact amount, but there's some extra money in there.
So it's not $191,000?
But where does that money reside, is it in the sheriff's department?
It goes back to the general fund.
Once it, once we determine the exact amount that needs to come out, it will go back to the general fund.
So, we have $191,000 that we could give for deputy pay, couldn't we, if we really wanted to?
Mr. Holder.
It actually will not go back into, quote-unquote, the general fund until an amendment is made, so as adopted July 1, it will be in the sheriff's budget, in the line item, in the sheriff's budget.
At which time, we could re-appropriate that money for other things, like a pay raise for the sheriff deputies?
Would that equal about 1.5 additional?
No, I mean, it would take about $213,000 to even give them a 1.2% increase.
Who has control of that money, the sheriff, or the general fund, you guys?
Well, technically, now that you've adopted the budget, it's been appropriated to the sheriff, you could do a budget amendment at your subsequent meeting and pull it back, and re-appropriate it.
The sheriff has control of that pot.
It's a line item that we have to stay within our budget, and we have to be spending on jail health care services unless the board chooses to delegate otherwise. It's a line item that we have to stay within our budget, and we have to be spending on jail health care services unless the board chooses to delegate otherwise. It was funded the gang investigative position, is what you asked.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
No further questions?
I appreciate you coming back.
No further discussion, let's vote.
Future item of business. Count on me bringing it back.
All right, Mr. Hammond, Miss Williams, and Mr. Owens, yes, we need to vote. And Mr. Colson. Mr. Hammond?
Dave.
Need you to vote on the jail health services.
Reduction.
Who made the motion?
Um-
I don't know who made the motion. Who made the motion?
Madam Clerk?
Who made a motion for this?
Mr. McGlonghorn.
Huh?
Mr. McGlonghorn.
Melvin made the motion.
I didn't hear it.
All right, next up, Mr. Elliott.
Next is the Region Q Workforce Investment Consortium. The Midwest Commission, on page 197 of your agenda, is asking Pitt County to renew its documents of membership in this consortium. We are members with a number of other counties, being Beaufort, Bertie, Hurford, and Martin. It's a five-member consortium. You've got two different documents before you. One is a resolution approving the Articles of Association and Agreement for Region Q Workforce Investment Consortium. And then the other is, is an expanded version of the Articles of Association and Agreement for the same.
Need an approval?
Yes, ma'am.
So may.
Second.
Motion seconds, vote. Next up, an appointment to the planning board?
Yes, sir, on page 204, you have planning board appointments.
May I offer a motion?
Sure, you have, hold on just a moment, you have Wanda Harrington has resigned from the Pitt County Planning Board. And based upon that, they're looking for an individual to take her place.
Russell Hemby has served on the Greenville Planning Board for a long time, and I offer motion that we appoint him.
Second. Who was that? Say the name again.
Russell Hemby.
Russell Hemby, any further nominations?
Well, I, because he called me, Kenneth Ross expressed interest in being appointed to that. And so I'd like to go ahead and make a, a motion that Kenneth Ross-
By rule, we take them in reverse order. So you'll vote on Mr. Ross first, and then Mr. Hemby if Mr. Ross does not get the votes.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, isn't Kenneth Ross the chairman of the planning board already?
I saw him on the list.
Yeah, I believe that Kenneth Ross is-
He's already chairman.
You know, I'm, I'm mixing this up with the, with another board, I'm sorry.
Just, uh, everybody just punch a button and, and clear out this vote.
So what, what you, how you do that?
Okay.
Just pick anything.
Just vote no and go along.
No, he, Kenneth, just for explanation, he was asking to be able to serve on the convention center board. I'm sorry, I apologize, the board.
That's what he was asking for.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're voting on Mr. Hemby.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Confirm. 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 Confirm button is all you need.
You didn't read the first time, you hit the confirm again.
Try it again.
I always press the left, press the yes again, and press the yes again, Dave, and then push it, push the confirm. But that's what you're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah, try that.
Let it confirm.
It's just not here, it's just not reading it. Does he need a battery for it?
I don't know, he's pushing, for sure. He's pressing, rather. So your finger didn't work either?
I have to go, um, hand, my hand vote.
All, all in favors? Yes, sir, raise, raise your right hand if you're in favor, or any hand. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have a removal from the PC Nursing Home and Adult Care Community Advisory Committee.
Yes, Mike Weimer and Malcolm Smith, due to a conflict of interest, being recommended to be removed.
Motion, they be approved, uh, removed?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Vote by raising your hand. All right, motion carries. Now, there's appointments and reappointments to the ABC Board?
But in addition to that, I think that they're asking also that we ask the clerk to advertise for these two vacancies. I don't think we have to vote on that, but I just want-
We, we have Dunn, Hardy, and Webb up for appointment, correct, to the ABC Board?
We're just, we're pointing clarification on the last item.
On the last item.
Madam Clerk will send out, will advertise the position.
Right.
Is that the one for the, uh?
For the nursing home.
For the nursing home.
Right, now we're on the ABC Board.
Uh, we have Dunn, Hardy, and Webb up for appointment.
And I would ask that the board members' compensation be restored to the previous level as part of that. That's about half of the board members. We're adjusting and correcting all wages everywhere. I think that is the correct thing to do. They were compensated at $50 a week. I think that is a good thing. Mr. ABC Chairman.
Ms, Mr. Chairman, uh, when we are appointing, we, we, we sat down and did a study of all the commissions and if we're gonna make gains and progress in this county, we need to start rotating the same people on the- We have a lot of good people in this county. And I like to see us advertise strongly about, uh, 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 boards and commission so that we can get some new folks on some of these boards. So could, could we do that?
If one of the first things you see on the website, I think we do advertise every time we have a position open on the board.
I have to try to look to find it, how to find, when I go on it, you have to look for that particular one.
We do it in the newspaper as well.
Kimber's been advertising that for years.
They have to fill out all-
Miss Ward?
But we, we are using the same people over and over and over again on different boards. Therefore, we're not getting any new ideas and new, any new creativity. If we're gonna move forward in this county, we need to find some way of getting some new blood on the board. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Miss Sweetheart. The board will come to order now, and we had a-
We don't control that, they fill out, they fill out with the clerk or-
Thank, yes, sir.
Or, 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 or notice, well, they are, they are, they are, they are, they are volunteering their services, sir.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Uh, the first motion dies for lack of a second. Uh, Miss Ward?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Glenn Webb for his unexpired term. I mean, for his term, he's up for reappointment. Pat Dunn is eligible for reappointment. And I would like to nominate Virginia Hardy to serve in the vacant seat.
We have a motion, is there a second on that motion, or any alternative motions?
Do we have to do all of them at one time?
Only that one time, I don't know why we compiling them all.
I'm, I'm open to motions or seconds.
Okay, well, I'll change the motion to just the reappointments.
Mr. Chairman.
So the motion on the floor now is reappointments of myself and, uh-
Patricia Dunn.
Patricia Dunn. There's a motion and a second on that. Mr. McGlonghorn, did you have some discussion on this particular motion?
No, no, not on that.
If you'll please vote by hand.
Vote by hand.
Because of Mr. Hammond's-
All right, motion carries. And, uh, Mr. McGlonghorn?
The motion that Commissioner Farley brought up, uh, could, Mrs. Manager, could you, could you explain more in detail as to what he was saying about the pay?
Well, a number of years ago, the ABC Board was compensated, I forget the, the level, I'd have to research it, at much higher level than what they are now. I believe, is it $50 a month now? Is, is the current compensation? It was three, four, five years ago, time escapes me that you, it may have been $250. Mr. Farley, can you?
It was $250 for the chairman, 200 for the rest of the board.
Thank you.
For the ABC Board?
Well, and then prior to that, health insurance, the, um, the ABC Board piggybacked on the county's health insurance program for its employees. The ABC Board members, um, took advantage of that opportunity and also provided that benefit to themselves as board members. The county directed them a number of years back, again, it's probably been five or six years, that they needed to come off our plan to obtain independent insurance, which they have done. They now have their own health insurance, they're not driving our numbers up or influencing our, our plan. The, at the same time or close to it, the 250 and the $200 per month for board compensation, it was looked at in terms of all boards that, that different county citizens are appointed to, whether Development Commission, Planning Board, DSS and so forth, in terms of coming into more equity with what is being provided as a, as a compensation for that board. And normally, it's, it's a small token for mileage.
But you did not, you did not compare it against other ABC Boards in the state. It's a much higher level.
Ms. Williams?
If you're gonna sing out one board and pay a different staff into the community, I have a problem with that. Because on social service, we only get $15.
Social services is a drag on the taxes.
I just want to say, you need to be consistent. You need to be consistent with board and, and compensating. And why are you raising this to 250 for that? You need to keep it $50 with everybody, if that's what you're gonna do. And, and there's no offense to any of you serving, but we need to be consistent. If you're gonna, I mean, 'cause all the citizens are doing time and whatever. So I think we need to be consistent on what we give the people who serves on these boards.
Well, the current business before us is appointments and reappointments. So we still have one matter on number 12 to deal with. I'll entertain any motions or recommendations. Yes, Mr. Owens?
I move that we reappoint you to your position, and as chairman.
I've already been reappointed.
You've already voted on that.
You have one to vote on that?
Yeah.
It's the John Benji slot coming on.
We have a bacon.
Has, has there any appointments on John Benji's?
I made the motion, but I took that part out to just get the reappointments.
What is your motion there?
To, um, appoint Virginia Hardy. She has a relationship, in fact, she's head of the, I'm not sure what her title is, but she's Vice Chancellor at the university in, with Student Affairs. And I feel like a person with that type of job would serve us well as far as serving on the ABC Board, and that's why I'm nominating her.
I like to second that, Ms. Chairman, simply because of the board, the ABC Board voted to recommend her for this position, so I certainly like to second that.
Thank you, motion and a second, is there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Max Joyner Jr. He is a Greenville businessman, has been for many years. He's in the real estate business, he's in the insurance business. He's served on the city council board here for six years. He's presently on the East Carolina Board of Trustees.
Now, are we having two nominations here?
There, there are two nominations, the nominations do not require a second. And by rule, we take the second nomination first. So you will be voting on Max Joyner Jr. for the ABC Board, and do so by raising your hand.
Six in favor, that passes.
Okay. Next is Pitt County Board of Adjustments.
Next on the Board of Adjustment, page 237. We have Annie Holder's term as the North of the River. She's not eligible for reappointment, and they're looking for an individual to replace her.
Is there any, uh, any motions on nominations?
Annie Holder, Board of Adjustment, North of the River.
I thought you would have somebody.
She's coming off because she can't be reappointed.
Do you have anybody to watch me in there? She wants reappointment?
She's not eligible for reappointment.
Oh, let me see, I slipped that one.
Who are the applicants?
Do we wanna postpone it until the next time when you get an opportunity? I would like to see us do that, if that would be good for you.
Motion to the table.
I move, so move, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Motion second, uh, vote by, raising your hand. All right, motion carries.
Okay.
Reappointment to the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees?
Um, I'd like to move that with the reappointment of Kathy Frazier, and I'd like to move for her reappointment. She served very well.
Any further nominations? Please vote by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, appointment to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team.
Motion to move Nellie Hefman to the seat of community representative.
We don't have the second one by hand.
Vote by, raising your hand.
Such a habit.
Commissioner's comments, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Hammond, do you have any comments? Oh, yes. Miss, Miss Williams, do you have any comments or a motion?
You have a motion about the closed session.
I do have a motion. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I would like to make a motion that we move Lisa P. Nichols, registrar of Ds, from $51,981 to $62,907.
Motion, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Vote by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Owens, do you have any comments?
Good meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Miss Ward, do you have any comments?
I have no comments.
Mr. McGlonghorn, comments or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to appoint, to approve the May 4th closed session meeting, uh, content only.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Please vote by raising your hand. Motion carries. Mr. Garris, do you have any comments?
No comment.
Did the Board of Judgment thing on tonight?
Uh, my only comments, I appreciate this board's support. Uh, I was able to go to the County Leadership Institute in Washington, DC, a few weeks ago. That's why I missed the last meeting. The Association of County Commissioners took care of that. That was at no cost to the county taxpayers. I believe I grew as a leader, I learned a lot. And I, I couldn't do it without your support, so I appreciate that. And with no further comments, is there any motions to adjourn? Motion to go home, any seconds? Raise your hand to vote. All right, we adjourn.